Hey guys, so in today's video, we're gonna be going over some more Anki flashcards. In this video, we're gonna be going over scikit-learn as well as TensorFlow. Over the last couple of days, I've pretty much been doing a lot of thinking whether I should kind of focus on regression instead of classification models for scikit-learn. But I figured if I'm gonna be doing this, I may as well actually just start working towards TensorFlow and then eventually also working towards possibly PyTorch. So mostly because I've actually been working with a MERN stack because I want to start creating in essence, minimum viable products and businesses for people to pretty much just use. So this is, it's all gonna kind of tie together though, like all this studying. And in the future, we'll kind of see what like the results are. But ultimately, I'll just dive into Anki right now and start going over the flashcards. For those that don't know, Anki is just a flashcard set and it uses spaced repetition to help you learn, learn specific information so you don't really forget it. And that's why I'm doing this with data science, data science libraries as well as potentially full stack. So that way I could just go and not really be hindered by needing to hire anyone for a specific role. Now, yeah, I'll just kind of dive right in then. So ultimately, what we're gonna be going over first is scikit-learn and then I'm gonna switch over to TensorFlow and it's gonna be about two-ish months since I've really worked with TensorFlow a lot. So we'll just kind of see how that is. So our first one, for our first question, so saving a train model. So after adjusting a parameters, after adjusting your parameters with random search CV, how can you save a model using pickle? And again, for anyone that's new, try to identify a solution for the question and likewise, if the answer is provided, try to figure out what the question would be. Generally, the answers are much easier to identify than a question. But if we want to save our model after adjusting the hyperparameters, what we could do is we could do, first, we would need to import pickle. So what I have in front of us is a Colab notebook and pretty much it will have, it'll have just a bunch of different stuff. Let's get rid of, actually, let's just run it all. And then it's not that much. So that was the pipeline. And then from here, it's pretty much how would you be able to save your model with pickle? So if we want to do that, I believe we could do import pickle. And then from there, it'd be pickle dot dump. And then I believe it would be open. And then it'd be the name of the file, so it would just be file name. Dot PKL or something like that. And then it would be read back or write back. Read back, write back, write binary. So, write binary. So in case you don't know, this is essentially a study session for me. So I don't, I'm not gonna be able to recall all of these, at least off the top of my memory. I've only done this flashcard once. And usually I just look up how do you save a file with pickle? So from there, it'd be pickle dot dump. The only problem is I'm not recalling where we would use our model. So for example, this is the model, like this is the variable. Where would I put that? Would it be? I'm thinking it might be just this. And then you just do model and then comma open and then, and there you'll be have, you'll have write back. And then from there, you can import a new, import the saved file with load model equals pickle dot load. And then from there, you would choose the file path and the file itself. And then I believe it would be write binary. And I'm not sure if it would be also open now. I think it would be. So we'd want to use open as well. So that's what I'm gonna put pickle dot dump to save the file, pickle dot load to load the file. Now, if we're gonna go ahead and see the answer, it would be, if you can't see this, sorry. But uh, so import pickle. And then it goes pickle dot dump and then it is the model like we have right here. So model. So, and then open and then it'd be the name dot PKL. Did we use PKL? We did. Cool. And then it would be, okay, so that's where I screwed up. So this one would just be string value, which would be WB stands for write binary. And then RB stands for read binary. So read binary. And then this one would be write binary. Yeah, so not too bad. Let's see if this works. It did. Funny. Load model dot fit. No, let's just see what the score is. X test, Y test. Nope. So model dot score. Okay, cool. So we do see that we were able to save our model with the, this name. And then we're able to open it as well, open, load it, I mean. And this score is in essence, the same as this one. So. And then a little trick to always, if you're looking, if you are working with like larger numbers and you need to go back and forth between them, an easy option would just be copy and then use command F or control F and then search it. And so long as they both highlight, then they'll both, you'll know that they're both equal. So yeah, so that was the first one. Maybe I'll do like 10 of these and then just switch over to TensorFlow. I want TensorFlow to be the majority for this video. So yeah, so it's fairly easy. I'll take select good, so I'd study it tomorrow maybe. And this is the same thing. Oh, never mind, joblib. Same thing in essence though. So what we do with joblib is we do from joblib import dump load. And then you'd use dump for the file itself, but then we'd have a file name. Instead of using open and then write binary, it would just be the file name, which would be right here. And then you could go ahead and load it with just load and then file name and so on. But uh, something, if you did not, like for example, if you just imported joblib, you would do joblib dot dump in order to save it. And likewise to load it, you would do joblib dot load. So that's fairly easy. I'll go to the next one. And then where are the exploratory data analysis libraries? Now, there's a lot, especially if you're not specific with regards to NLTK, scrape, Spacy. I mean, we usually use pandas, Seaborn, map plot live. Panda, Seaborn, map plot live, NumPy as well sometimes. So there's a whole lot, but the core for this one, at least the big three is NumPy, map plot, map plot lib slash Seaborn and then pandas. But pandas would first, for sure be one of your biggest ones that you would go with. So not too bad. What else do we have? So the next question, after scoring our model, how can you evaluate the model with cross valve score? How can you import cross valve score and then how can you score none and score precision? In essence, what we're gonna do is we're gonna create two cross valve scores. So. Okay, what was it though? So the first thing we'd want to do is import it. So, and then after scoring a model, how can you evaluate it? So what we would do is we'd need to import it. So from scikit-learn dot model selection, import cross valve score. And then from there, it would be, what would it be? We need to import it and then we need to evaluate it. But in essence, we're kind of already looking at it. So how do we go ahead and use this? What we could do is we could do model CV for model cross file or right. So that's after, that's how we evaluate it. So after scoring the model, right? So we've scored it. So then model CV, cross valve score. And then from there, the estimator will be random force classifier, because that's what we're working with. Or are we working with logistic regression? For this one, this one's random force. So we're gonna stick with the random force classifier. And then from there, the X would be just X and then Y would be Y. CV would then equal five. Let's go with verbose equal to two and then what else? I think fit params, fit params. What would fit params be? Fit params. I think I'm gonna go ahead and skip on that. And what I'll do is I'll just do scoring. So scoring will go ahead and equal none, which I believe is the default. And then that would be our first one. And then our second one would be two. And then from there, scoring would be instead of none, we go ahead and make that precision. And then I believe that should be it. Perfect. And then it failed as well. Oh, because these are floats. So they weren't actually transformed into numeric values. So you're gonna want to make sure that when working with cross valve score, that your data, the X at least and the Y, that they're not string values, that they're all numeric. So let's go ahead and see what the answer would be. So model selection, import cross valve score. Uh, let's see, cross valve, then we'd use our estimator, which would equal CLF. And in this case, CLF is actually random force classifier. It's just, CLF stands, is the variable for this. X, in essence, we probably should do X equal to X, Y equal to Y, CV equal to five and scoring to none. And then likewise, because of the second part, how can you do score precision? Well, all we would do is we do score precision here. And then each of these, one, two, three, four and five, derive from the CV equal to five. So let's edit this and then I'll work with a handful more of these. So there. There. Okay, better. And then how can you score none? Create two, create two cross valve score. Score and set one with a score of none. And the other with a score of precision. Okay, cool. Close. And then again, see the answer and that should be easy. So not too bad. And then, like I said earlier, so sometimes we'll show the answer and then the question. Also select easy for that. And then again, another answer. So how do we import? How do we save our model with pickle? We do pickle dot dump. And then we do the model and then open with our file name and then write binary. And then the other one would be load. So pickle dot load with open the file itself and then read binary. Right? Yeah. And then from there, we could score it. And we would do this after we already scored. So we do rs CLF dot score and then we evaluate whatever that would be. So if we were to flip this though, last time I showed the answer for joblib, how would we use joblib to save and load our model? So if you want, feel free to pause the video, otherwise we'll go ahead and do that now. So first, we'd want to import joblib. So from here, we could do from joblib, joblib import dump load. And then from there, we could do dump. Then we have our file name or like the model, I should say, and then file name. File name would then equal model. And then from there, I actually don't recall what the, the file would be. I think it might be JBL. Or it might be actually joblib. I don't think that's right either. It might be, I'll just do JBL for now. And I think that should be it. So that would save it. And then we could load it with model loaded, which would then equal load. And then from there, we would load the model itself, which would be model dot, whatever the file path name would be. And I think that's actually it as well. So let's go ahead and let's show the answer for this one, which I'll just click easy. This is how we score it. And let's see if the next one would be it. Nope. Okay. If that's the case, and what I'm gonna go ahead and do is let's go to browse. And then let's go to our cheat sheet. And then from there, what would it be? So then this would be it. So I know you likely cannot see it. But in essence, saving a training model after adjusting your parameters with randomized search CV, how can you save a model using joblib? So what we would do is from joblib, import dump and load. And then from there, we'd save it with dump. And then this would be our model, which is what I already selected. And then from there, file name would equal the name and then dot joblib. So this one should be joblib. So it should actually be dot joblib and then pickles would be PKL. And then what else is it? And then if we wanted to load it, we would just load it with file name equals that. So we'd actually need to do file name. I'm actually not sure if we would need file name, but for now, let's just leave it. Run it. And let's actually see what the score would be. So model loaded dot score and then it'd be X test, Y test. From there, it should also be sixty something. Copy paste. We see that we have one, two and three, and they're all the same. Perfect. Okay, I feel fairly confident with just kind of this quick review of scikit-learn. What I'm gonna go ahead and do is let's go ahead and dive into TensorFlow. For those that aren't interested, feel free to turn it off. Otherwise, expect a lot of errors. So TensorFlow, I've worked with a bit, but it's it's definitely gonna be worth practicing. So expect a lot of errors and a lot of just weird moments where I'm just kind of thinking. So where's TensorFlow? I've got regular classification convolutional neural network. I kind of wanted to do that. But um, yeah. All right. So let's go ahead and just dive right in. So TensorFlow, so what is this? TensorFlow convolutional neural networks and computer vision. So what is the architecture of a convolutional neural network? So that's a good question. Let's go ahead and let's see if I'm able to redo this. So I believe it would just be import TensorFlow. So we have tensor board, we have all the rest. From there, let's go ahead and import NumPy as NP and then import TensorFlow as TF. That's right. And then from there, what could we do? We could do TF dot ones and then we do one and one. Is that right? And we could do this, call this just ones and let's see what happens. Well, I should have ran it. Oh. Ones. And then so let's go ahead and do ones dot. I don't even remember. Okay, this will be fun. Let's just see what the answer is. Oh joy. Look at this. So what I'm gonna go ahead and do, for those of you that are still watching, is I'm gonna go ahead and link to you the course that I took to where a lot of these images will come from. You might not be able to see all of them, but you will likely be able to see the code. And if you're up to the task and you want to learn TensorFlow, please feel free or please consider actually purchasing the course. Because first off, it really helps out the individual that created the course. It takes a lot of hours to do this. And secondly, I don't think you'll really regret it. It's a solid course and it's as, as long as you know it, you should be able to follow along with PyTorch fairly decently with regards to just creating a neural network. So mostly because they're similar, it's just a little different. So what we have with this example, can I zoom in? Nope. So what would the answer be? So from here, this is a convolution two, can be a convolution three, convolution one and so on. One, one D typically are texts. That's right. Okay, so let's go ahead and recreate this, because it's coming back to me now. So what he did was layers, he did the filters, kernel size, activation, the inputs as well as convolution two D, max pooling two D, conv two D, two D, max pooling, flatten and then dense. So let's not worry about this. Let's do what I remember how to do. So what would it be? So would it, save it as a more, yeah, I would. Okay. So this will just call our new, our nn model. And then from there, it'd be tensorflow dot cares dot sequential. And then from there, all this would be wrapped together. So we'll do tensorflow dot cares dot dense. And then from there, we could do just one. And then another one, tensorflow dot cares dot dense. And then we could do another one. Actually, let's make this ten and let's make this one hundred. And then from there, let's go ahead and do tensorflow dot cares dot dense. And let's go ahead and make that one hundred as well. And then from there, I think that should be it. But what would come next? Is we would want to go ahead and activate the model itself. So we would use, would we save it again? So we create our model with the variable and then tensorflow dot cares dot models. That's what it would be. So it would be dot models dot sequential. And then this one would be a list as well. So we'd want to make sure we turn this into a list. A list of tuples. And then from there, what do we have? So then we do, they had the activation, CNN model dot compile. Okay. So then from there, we would use nn model dot compile. And then from there, it would be what would it be cross entropy loss? Forget. So it would be a loss, which would equal to binary cross entropy. Cause that's what it was. Loss, which is equal to binary cross entropy. Binary cross entropy, something like that. And then from there, it would be optimizer, which would then equal Adam. So then from there, it would be optimizer, which will then equal tensorflow dot cares dot. What would it be? So the optimizer would be optin, would it be optin to Adam? Would that be it or is it the other way around? So it goes optimizer, tensorflow dot cares dot optimizers. Okay. Opt in my optimizers. And then from there, shoot, I think it would be metrics. Let's see. Is it metrics? So metrics would equal accuracy, because this in essence is a classification. So it'd be accuracy. And then from there, what we would do is we do nn dot model dot what? What comes next? So we've created a rough model. This is not an actual convolutional neural network. This is just a basic, just throwing a model out there with some hidden layers and whatnot. And just so you know, each of these is a specific layer. And the units within that layer are these values, ten. So what would it be after that? Then we would save it to a history, which will then be model dot fit on our training data with epochs of ten. Okay. So history would then equal the model and then dot fit. I'm already blanking. I know epochs equals to five, but what else would it be? So epoch equals to five, we don't use our training data. Okay. Train data. Okay. So this is a very, very rough. Not convolutional neural network. It's just a neural network that you can customize. And that's kind of why AI is so powerful, all this customization. What I think I'm gonna do is let's just leave that as again, and let's go back to the decks and let's review something more basic. And rather than typing this out, hopefully I'll just be able to flip through the flashcards. So let's just start at the beginning. And it looks like I've got about sixty-five of these. So this should be fun. So this looks like an answer. Great. But what's going on with this? So we have random, the variable, which is equal to TF dot random dot generator from seed. So this one is in essence, very similar to numpi dot seed as well as random state. Numpi dot random dot seed is numpi and then random state is scikit-learn in our train test split. And then this is gonna be our seeding the data. So that way I believe we maintain the same, the same output. So what it does is it will create two random, but the same tensors. So this is random one and then random two. This will go ahead and seed the tensors that way they are the same, but they're also random. So this is, I guess, just in essence, kind of a neat, neat thing to know. So although we're using dot random, what dot random will do is it'll generate random numbers. But because we're using forty-two, it's gonna keep the values the same. If this value is changed to forty-one, then these values likely would not equal each other. So yeah, okay. So I'm trying to think of how I can remember this. So tensorflow dot random, TF dot random. First off, why would I even want it though? Okay. So that's in essence, like our random, right? So I'll just keep flipping through these. Yeah, I'll just keep flipping through these. So next up looks like another answer or actually it's the same one. So why is random one equals to random two? Are they both random? So TF random generator, we have seven and likewise, we also have seven right here. And then from there, we use random dot normal shape equals three by two. And likewise, this also, so they will be, they will be like equals, like when in this equals populates, it should be true, 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 true. Because we'll have three rows by two columns of just true values. And that is almost what it printed out. So yeah, so they're both pseudo random dot from seed seven. Okay, so it's fairly easy. And I did try to make some of these. So outputs random values from a normal distribution. So TF dot random dot normal and then what the shape and so on. I'm not sure what to expect for the answer, but let's see. So that was the answer then. So what does TF dot random dot normal do? So I think that was fairly hard. I'll just kind of click on hard and then we'll come back to that later. And then next up, we have, how can you shuffle the order of elements in a tensor? And then why would you want to shuffle the elements in a tensor? So if I'm not mistaken, what we could do is we could do TensorFlow dot shuffle. Right? Nope, I guess not. So the other one was tensorflow dot random dot. Is it dot shape? Nope. I'm already blanking all that was. A joy. Nope. This is gonna be fun. So I was trying to recall the random, which is what in essence, I'm thinking is would be the same thing for shuffle. So it'd be tensorflow dot shuffle. And that's probably wrong, but the reason that I believe we would want to shuffle the data is so that way our algorithm doesn't become accustomed to the same data being over, like learning from the same data. So in essence, to try to overcome overfitting. So we would use TensorFlow dot random dot shuffle, which is what I thought I would have done, but I did not. No, it works. Wow. So I was close. So TensorFlow dot random dot shuffle. And then it's best to mix up your data. So the data is shuffled and the algorithm adjusts its weights to learn images, patterns in the data or speech or text. It's smart to shuffle the data. So the algorithm Patterns in the data or speech or text, it's smart to shuffle the data so the algorithm learns from the, uh, that's right. Okay, so one sexy example of this would be like, for example, if our first file is an image of a cat. And then, okay, fine, or column transformer. And then the next one is an image of an one hot encoder. And then the next one is an image of a column transformer again, and then the next one is a um, one hot encoder. The algorithm would then be able to pick up that there's a pattern in uh, our data. So it'd be column transformer, one hot encoder, column transformer, one hot encoder, and then the fifth one, let's say would be about pipeline. And then the fifth one would be a pipeline, it would recognize that there's a pattern uh, for these handful. But as soon as it got to the fifth one, it might recognize uh, it might not be able to understand really what a pipeline is. So if we shuffled everything around over millions of um, files. Um, it would then need to get good at. Learning the different files and actually learning from it rather than recognizing patterns from the file that's presented to it. Um, so yeah, so I was always a good thought. And that's always kind of something to consider when doing this, so. Okay. So I was kind of just quickly thinking about like why I should be um, studying these flashcards. Like I don't really wanna learn something just to have it in the back of my mind, like I actually wanna be able to know it. Yeah, and I do think that if anything, just sticking with tensor flow to help out with an MVP before. Um, would be good longer term speaking, so. So yeah, so then next up, what have we got? This is looking like the same thing, it's a. Random TF dot random dot generator front dot from seed forty two. So remember it's from seed forty two, numpy is numpy dot random dot seed forty two. And then psychic learn uh, train test split is random state forty two. Now everyone, or at least because the person that I have learned this from, he always uses forty two and everything. Because it's the answer to the universe or uh, just look up online why forty two is the answer to the universe. Um, so what is this? So create two random but the same tensors and so on. So, okay. And then, yeah. So this is the answer then, so how would you create a random tensor? You would do TF dot random dot generator dot from seed. So next. How can you shuffle over a non shuffled variable? So not shuffle equals TF that constant. How can you shuffle over it? Um, I don't think you can, if it's, if it's constant, then you wouldn't. What you could do is you could do TF dot variable if I'm not mistaken. So what it would be is it would be like TF dot variable and then from there we could do. These values, let's see if this will paste. Hmm, sort of. So then you could do that, um, and then we could do. We could say that this is TF one would equal that. And then from there we do TF one dot random dot shuffle, right? Uh, I think, let's go ahead and see what the answer would be. So shuffling a tensor with constant. Uh, so we would just do TF dot random dot shuffle, not shuffled. And then does it actually shuffle it? It does. So we see ten right here and then ten right here, three right here, three here and two at the bottom, two on top. So instead of what I did, it would be still constant. And then they just saved as a variable, so not shuffled. And for our example, we did, we'll do TF underscore one. And then it would be TF dot random dot shuffle. And then from there it would be TF underscore one. So going back to our reason why we do wanna shuffle our data. Is because obviously we want our um, network, neural network to learn based off of the data itself, not necessarily the patterns. Of the data where they exist in the file path. So, okay, so that's kinda good to know. So let's just do easy. So what are the number of dimensions of a tensor, of this tensor? The number of dimensions, so what we could do is we could do. So we could have this created and then we could just do N dim to identify what that would be. Um, let's cross these out. Let's do this. And then what I mean by N dim is we do tensor dot N dim and that would give us the number of dimensions. Now, if we wanted to be able to view this a little bit better, what we could do. Is make this look pretty or somewhat. And then there, it would be the dimensions, how would we identify that? So. We would for sure have one entire thing, so if I had to. I'm just gonna kind of give the dimensions of what I think would be really quick and then we'll see what the answer would be. So we've got the first mention, which would be. This section, so we'd have one, we'd have two, and then we'd have three. So it would be three. By. And then from there, I believe. Because of the number of columns of this, we have one, two and three. I believe it would be three by three by one. And yes, I think that this part I just screwed up on when I said the columns themselves would be three, so like one, two and three. Um, rather than one, two, and then three. But I do know that we for sure would have one whole one because this entire thing would be considered its own. Or at least that's what I think I'm able to recall. So the answer is just three. Okay, so. It's actually kind of important to know that um, the data, like the dimensions. Mostly because when you do transform an image or a piece of text into a tensor. You're gonna wanna know like how the array is established. So that would be three, but now if we would actually run this code, let's see what the code output would be. So we had to have invalid syntax. Um, comma, 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 comma. Comma, 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 comma. And where would the invalid syntax be? If that constant, he's got one, two and three, we've got one, two and three. One, close. That's fine, those are in essence just um, like floats, I believe. One and one, and then we'd have seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, two and two, two and two, two and two. Two and two, and then two and two and two and two. And one, two, three, three, okay. And let's run it again and we'd see that the answer is three. So, yeah, just when you create these, obviously as you just saw, try to make sure that the array um, is aligned properly. So next up, what we've got is it looks like something we've already kind of go over. So what is happening when you add seed forty two to our shuffled values? So. Shuffle, not shuffled, so the values should remain the same, even though we select them, told them to be shuffled. So. You get different results, never mind. So if we use TF dot random dot shuffled and then we call not shuffled, which is pretty much our un shuffled data. And then we're gonna go ahead and shuffle them, even though we seed them with forty two, if you add TF dot C dot random forty two. Oh, so you do get the same outfit, same outfit. Um, is a global operation while the random shuffle is not, okay, so. TF dot random dot set seed forty two, which is right here, this will be our global, oh, I see, okay. So if we use TF dot random dot set seed forty two. Then even if we use seed forty two right here, then this will um. Ensure that uh, the data stays the same. Um, it stays consistent because this global variable overrides all other variables. Whereas you'll get different results, even if you use random seed. Let's go ahead and test that. So we already have our seed or we have tensor. So let's just do TF dot random dot, what was it shuffle? And then from there it would be tensor. And then from there we could do seed which would equal forty two. And let's run it, or not, tensor. So we have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, run it again, 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 oh, not. Um, whoops, run it. So now we have one, two and three. Again, one, two and three, and then we have seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, seven, eight, nine. Interesting. And then we see that it did shuffle again, so that's odd. Um, it seems like for every, every fifth click, it then shuffles everything around, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Oh, no, it doesn't. So it looks like it says same. And then what happens if we do TF dot random dot set seed? Right, forty two? And let's go ahead and do TF dot random dot shuffle. And then here we'll do tensor, tensor. And then from there we'll do print and then we'll do a print task times forty so we could separate them. And evaluate what's going on. So this one will be. Print, I mean, that won't really do a whole lot, but uh, actually maybe it will, so we do forward slash N and then from there we could do. Um, seed not global. From here we could do. Print. Seed global and then I believe forward slash N, just so we have that additional space. So we have seed global space, right, wrong, no, that's right, that's wrong. Um, but I'm. Do I need to do print? And likewise. Print. Cool. And let's also do forward slash N. And then, when you do that, sure, why not? Then forward slash N. So now we have some extra breathing room between the seed global. Um, for those that don't know, forward slash N is pretty much a line space. Uh, so what is this? So we have seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Likewise, here we have one, two, three, four, five, six, let's run it again, try to remember. So here, seven, eight, nine, and then one, two, three, one more time. So seven, eight, nine, one, two, three. So it looks like they're all staying the same. Um, one more time. Yep, so they're still looking like they're staying the same. So what is this then? So you get different results. But that's a lie. TF dot random dot shuffle, right? TF dot random dot shuffle, TF dot random dot shuffle tensor. And then we have, this is in essence the tensor, so that's this constant, is our tensor constant? It is. It's weird. So let's get, let's update this then, cuz that's wrong. So you get. Different results. I mean, are they different than this? So we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Seven, eight, nine, so in essence it is shuffling. Oh, wait, one, two, three. Hmm, okay. So for those that recognize this before I even finally did. What's occurring then with this is it's how it's shuffled. So meaning, if we have, oh no, this might be a dumb example then. Oh, whatever. So, um. Yeah, so in essence, if we use random seed, like TF dot random dot set seed forty two, shuffle it. And then we call tensor, this gets shuffled and then it just stays the same shuffled value. Um, every time, so one, two, three is at the bottom, seven, eight, nine. And then this is the first part. Now, if we use seed equals to forty two. This value, which is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, still maintains this shape. Like the same numbers, right? This one shuffles it and then stays the same every time we run it, this one actually keeps the same output. So if we want to shuffle it and then keep the same value, we'll do C, set C forty two, which is our global variable. Or if we want to keep it the same, even though, I don't know why you'd wanna shuffle it, but if you wanted to, well, it still wouldn't work. Um, you do you see equal to forty two. So, yeah. Um. How do I wanna word this? You get different results. So, no, you don't. Um. But the output, output is not shuffled with the below exam. With the below line, line of code. And then what is this? If you add random seed, you get the same output, so that's stupid. Um, TF dot random dot set C forty two is the global operation. Yeah, so I mean, that's useful information. But. Um. If you had TF dot forty two, the. Values shuffle once and then stay constant. Okay, that's good enough. Uh, let's keep going. So it's a normal distribution, a normal distribution is a function that represents distributions of many random variables. So in our example, if we wanted to see what a normal distribution would look like, um, I hope that this still works, does our data frame work still? Is it, is it operating? Sure, so let's do data frame dot hist. Dot hist, uh, bins, I think will equal like twelve. Fig size will equal fifteen by ten and let's go ahead and view it. I hope that this works. So for example purposes, since this isn't a very good example, so imagine if this line, like this chart. Um, uh, whatever, let's just do normal distribution. So a normal distribution would look like this, right? So you'd have like the little bell curve and the example that I was attempting to show you was this one. Um, whereas it's not really a normal distribution, it's skewed to the left or yeah, skewed left a little bit. Um, but in essence, a normal distribution would have the minimum or the highest values in the middle. And then it would just go down and that's like a perfect um, distribution. Um. And there's other examples too, but in essence, that's what a normal distribution was or is. So not bad, oh. And then how would you use it? So we do create one with TF dot random dot normal. So not too bad. And then what's the next one? So the next one looks like an answer, so they are both pseudo random dot forest. Or ra- random dot from seed seven maintains the same set of numbers. So again, going back to our global, um. What is the word I'm looking for? Global, ooh, I didn't do that. Global variable. So let's make this global, let's go ahead and say that this one is. Now that wouldn't work with it. Normal shape. So we'd have our seed and then seed would stay the same. Um, and likewise the seed, even though it'd be different variable, it'd still stay the same. So yeah. So let's go ahead and click easy and move on next one. TF dot constant, so this is just an answer. TF dot constant will be what? How can you create a? TF dot constant will be what? How can you create a tensor? So this is in essence a tensor. Um what else? TF dot random dot shuffle. So that's pretty much what we've been going over. And then why would you why you want to shuffle the data? Because it's important. Then we have another constant there um value. Was the mention of TF dot constant? Uh so it's asking about the N dim. So N dimensions and then that one is two. So if this one's two, why is that two and the other one three? So we'd have one, two, three. That's two dimensions. So that would be one dimension. One dimension because of these two. Like this entire thing is one. And then is that because it's two? It's been a long time since I've kind of understood this. Um I'm I'm likely actually gonna go look for more videos on N dimensions. Um so yeah. Next. TF dot random again. So the answer. How can you shuffle a non a not shuffle the tensor and then pretty much just TF dot random dot shuffle and then input the the values. Another N dimensions one. And then let's just do one more. So this looks like another answer. Good job. So this is TF dot random dot shuffle. Then it's the global variable, the one we that we actually just went over. And then one more. I just wanna see if there's anything like different. So how many dimensions does our vector have? One. No. No, this one has none. No, okay, I I lie. So the dimensions for a scaler right here. So if it's TF dot constant, it's just seven, then it is none. So it'll be zero. But this one vector will be one. Let's see. Okay, so if this is one, that means just like, that means then that this and this is two because we see that we have the list right here. And then we also have this additional dimension to it. So it's a two D. And then because we're making it a three D because it's right here. So that's why this one is three dimensions. So one dimension is like kind of one list. A two dimension is a um I don't know. What what's another word for a list? So like what's two lists together? I'm not sure. What would be two lists together? Anyways, so that's two. And then because we have our third, so we have one, two and three and then one, two and three. So just remember that one is a list and then from there you should be good to go. Cool. I think I'm gonna go ahead and end it here. So yeah, so I think in the next couple of videos, ultimately what I'm gonna do is keep going with tense flow. I'm currently working on uh express and node flashcards. But we'll see what I do with those. In essence, all I'm doing is I pretty much just using free code camps um Mern stack as well as some other online sources. But um yeah, I'll create keep creating those, maybe come up with some more of those later. Uh the reason that I'm studying the psychic learn is ultimately because I think that how I eventually capture the data for um a minimum viable product. I am I've had a couple of things in mind of not necessarily keeping the data stored local more in a cloud service. But the reason that I'm learning psychic learner so that way then I can go ahead and in essence just create the AI for it. And then bring the AI to the customer rather than the opposite way around. So I'll kind of end that here. Feel free to click on any of the links below. Hopefully I'll remember to link the individual that I'm studying from. And then if you're feeling generous, please feel free to purchase the uh course. You can always buy the course for fairly cheap on Udemy around ten dollars. Um but if you want to support them long term, then click on the 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 other link to their main like website. So I'll go ahead and end here. So uh yeah, I guess I'll go ahead and see you guys in the next video. Thanks.